That I think Ms. Ford alluded to, which is having a site visit when the shutters are down and then coming up with a final decision and also leaving it up to the applicant to come back with some suggestions if not vinyl, then what are the options on wood replacement versus repairing the ones that are there? I personally think in this particular building, in this instance, it is integral to the design, the historic character, the streetscape, and on balance, I don't think that that particular cost item is huge compared to other things that can happen in a construction project, you know, having to redo a drainage feature or something. I mean, I'm not saying it's inconsequential, but I don't think, on balance, that it's an inappropriate expense for a house that has this historic history.
Mr. Carson.
I would agree, and also it's in a very visible location, and it's a very major road coming into town. It's not on an obscure side street. It's something people have been used to seeing for years as it is, and to suddenly change it very greatly, I think that could be a mistake.
So we can require that these shutters be replaced with or rebuilt when shutters? We're entitled to require that as a condition of this site plan review.
It wouldn't impact our construction sequencing or schedule if you were to require us to remove the shutters and notify you as soon as they're down so you could visit the site and see what they look like. We'd be happy to do that, and if, as part of the conditioning of the approval.
Would you be satisfied with that?
It's not onerous or exceptional.
I think it's a really good first step in resolving this and being able to see it in the context of all the other houses, because there are several houses in that row that have the same shutters going three ways around, and I just, I think it's important that everybody see that and see it in context without them.
Mr. Schreiber.
So I'm going to suggest a slightly different condition in which still involves Kathy Ford, but it's the Design Review Board that makes that, that goes out to the site and makes this determination.
I see Ms. Kruger shaking her head over there. Yes?
I'd like to object to engaging another town body in this decision. If you can provide a decision this evening, it will facilitate the project, and I'm concerned that that procedure may not allow that. I don't know, but you're gonna, if I may offer, this is going to come before you many, many times, so if it should be a Design Review Board process, take it off the Planning Board's table in the bylaws and make it a requirement of the Design Review Board. I would have already been there as of today.
I'm inclined to agree with you that this is our responsibility. So I'm also inclined to make a condition that, as Mr. Jessup suggested, the shutters be taken down and at that time we'd be notified to go and make a site visit.
And not just the sides, but I think you have to take the front off, too. I feel strongly it's either or. It's either all shutters or no shutters.
Okay. You have agreement from the applicant on that. Ms. Brestrop.
Do you want to include in that condition that the existing shutters be preserved until you've made your decision?
Yes. Yes. All right. Thank you, everyone, for a collaborative solution. That's very good. Let me see if I can figure out where we were.
Number one.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. All right. The other issue with that was the porch, that we need to see the design of the porch.
Actually, you know, I think, if I could, I think I could address that pretty clearly. There's this side porch right here. For those of you who are at the site today, I think we went over that, but this window here is going to come out and there'll be a door there identical to this door, and there'll be a porch identical in form and style and sizing and roof details, identical, identical, with the one small exception that it will project about nine to 12 inches further out in order to provide a code compliant landing at that new door. This current landing on this is only about two feet or two feet, two inches, and we really need a three-foot landing. So the other, the posts on the new porch will project out about eight, nine to 12 inches further than this one, so, and actually, I think will be a little more interesting than they were side by side. You get one porch will, the one porch will come out a little and the other one steps back just a little bit, but it'll be identical to that porch from a design point of view, if that's useful.
Thank you, Mr. Jessup. Is, and I'm, I see that as...
And we perhaps have to provide detailed drawings of that as a condition.
Okay. Excellent.
As well.
Detailed drawings are good. Mr. Schreiber.
So on the issue of the porch, I'm, I know that we're approving this on the condition that we actually see the porch, but I wouldn't bind yourself to making it identical, identical. In other words, I think, it doesn't appear to have been drawn yet, so I would rather keep it open as to actually what it, so don't, I'd rather actually not bind them to identical, identical, but actually come back with, yeah.
With an elevation showing the porch designs.
I'd like to clarify, we are not proposing that the new porch have shutters.
I'm not sure if that'll be acceptable. We may require shutters on the porch. No sofas on the lawn, though. All right. Moving on, we are going to ask that you come back with a drawing of the porch. And you might consider extending the existing one to come into code, even though you don't have to.
Yeah.
Make it a lot nicer for the residents, to have room to get inside with their groceries.
Have we got that under control with the Building Department?
In other words, no.
Contemporary design shall not be discouraged. That's not being proposed. Number five. Improve the quality, appearance, and usability of existing buildings. This building appears well suited to becoming a duplex, given its structure. Okay. That was 3.2040. We're now on to 3.2041. At a minimum, we must consider the following standards. Height is inapplicable. Proportions and relationships of height to width between windows, doors, signs, architectural elements. We've asked the applicant to come back with extra drawings. Three, relation of structures and spaces. That's not changing. Four, shape of roof stores and windows, design elements, architectural style and character. Again, we've asked for additional drawings. Five, landscaping is acceptable as is. Six, scale is inapplicable. Seven, directional expression is inapplicable. Architectural and site details are acceptable, except as otherwise conditioned, and signs, no signs are proposed. All right. We're going to need a motion that incorporates waivers for landscape plan, lighting plan, soil erosion plan, sign plan, and traffic impact statement. Conditions that the applicant come back with elevation showing the porch. They're going to pull the shutters off and give us a call so we can come see it. We need in-town engineer approval. We need fire department approval. What did we decide about the path in the new parking area? Were we just going to prove it as is?
No, I don't think so.
Ms. Brestrop.
Would you like them to bring back a revised site plan showing the revised parking as we've discussed or as you've discussed and the pathway?
That's exactly what I meant to say. Anything else that I missed?
A copy of the lease as part of the management plan.
Copy of the lease, which should include a no lawn couch provision. Anything else? Mr. O'Keefe.
I just have a question as to what our procedure is going to be after we view the building with the shutters off. Is that going to come back to this board to then have a discussion and a vote on which way we're going to go on the shutters?
Yeah, I think, I think it needs to come back with photos, really, because not all of us are going to make the site visit. And then we'll decide whether the condition has been satisfied, right? Or whether to require shutters or not, really, because it's design review. Would anyone care to make such a motion?
Someone.
Wrong board, Peter.
What he said.
Are you making that motion, Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
I'll second.
Mr. Rosnoy is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, folks. Thank you very much for your considerations. I'm going to go slightly out of order here and go directly to new business. We'll do old business after. We have a lot release request for lots 2, 45, 46, 52, and 65 in Amherst Hills subdivision 89-13. This is Tofino Associates coming for us. Hi.
Hi. I'm Ted Parker, the president of Tofino Associates, and we've made this request. I looked in reviewing this just now, I realized that, I'm embarrassed to say, there's a typographical error in the lot numbers, and there's also an error in the map. But I think we have bigger, bigger issues to discuss about releasing the lots and performance guarantees, so.
You can proceed. Ms. Brestrop.
You should have all received a cost estimate. I think I put it on your desk. The DPW, Jason Skiles and his people have come up with a cost estimate for finishing the infrastructure on the roadway, on the roadways in Amherst Hills subdivision, and in the past, the Planning Board has required, once a developer gets to a certain point and a certain number of lots have been released, that the developers start to put money in escrow to finish up the infrastructure. And sometimes what the Planning Board has done is take the total amount of money that would be required to finish the road and divide it by the number of lots that are still to be released, and each time a developer comes before the board, request that a check for that amount be put in escrow with the town for release of the lot. And then as, as the developer finishes the road bit by bit, he can request that some of that money be returned to him. And then at the end of the project, when the whole thing is all finished and you're satisfied that the roadways are up to par and so is the town engineer, then the rest of the money can be released. So that's the way things have been done in the past. There have been discussions about the way this project should proceed because this is a very large project. It's very old. It's been around since the 80s. It's been developed bit by bit to at least two different developers. And there's been discussion with at least one board member and staff about the potential of releasing, you know, a certain number of lots in addition to the 50%. We're right about the 50% point now, and because these lots are so valuable and not holding escrow funds until later on in the process. I had a conversation with the town engineer today, and he recommends against that procedure. He feels that, you know, this project has taken so long and there's so much that still needs to be done that it would be better if the Planning Board were to require some amount of money to be put in escrow. I understand that Mr. Parker has a different kind of proposal for you, so I will, if, with your permission, let him explain what he is proposing, but I just wanted to let you know what the town's ordinary, traditional policy has been.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brestrop, for that good explanation, and would you like to let us know what you're considering?
Yes. There are a total of seven, even though it shows 73 lots on the map, three of those lots are actually in Belcher Town, so there are only 70 lots that are in Amherst, so I assume that those are the only 70 lots that we're talking about. 71, 2, and 3 are over the Belcher Town line, and you can't see the extension of Linden Ridge Road on this partial map that was submitted with this application, but Linden Ridge Road ends in a cul-de-sac, and there are additional lots out to the cul-de-sac. There are, of the 70, we currently have, I believe, 33 released, and I wasn't completely up to speed about the requirement for surety that the project would be completed. Rather than putting money in escrow, I think that we would probably suggest that we provide a three-party agreement with our lender, which is a form of agreement between the town, the developer, and the bank who's responsible for the, who holds the mortgage on the property, that they, it's an agreement that ensures the town that in the event that the developer doesn't perform at some point, that the bank is responsible for providing the funds to complete the project, and the town can, can exercise that option. And I, it's, I'm, I'm waiting for a word from our attorney, but I believe that that's an option that we're allowed by statute, rather than providing a performance bond in escrow. It functions the same, it just, from the developer's side, it's a little less expensive because it doesn't tie up that large amount of money for the period of time that it might take to complete the project. And it would be great if we, if we completely could predict what the absorption rate, what the, what the sales rate on these lots are going to be, but we don't, we don't really know what the sales rate is going to be. We have no control over the market, so we're only developing them as the market dictates that there's a, there's an actual demand for them. I'll share with you our plans for the, for the next couple of years. I think that right now we're in the process of getting estimates from contractors, from a number of site contractors, to complete the loop, to connect Concord and Linden Ridge, not all the way up to the cul-de-sac, but just to complete the loop. It's my understanding that when Doug originally, I mean, for those of you who knew Doug Cole, when Doug originally made the decision to stop the road, the road, Concord Road stops just about at the border of Lot 55 and 56, and Linden Ridge Road stops just past the border of 64 and 57. And each of those decisions was predicated upon the longest dead-end road you could have without having to put in a turnaround or a hammerhead. So we are actually beginning to run out, sales have picked up a little bit, and we are running out of a sufficient quantity and variety of lots at different price points to interest buyers. So we are interested in putting into, onto the market all of the lots that would be available by completing that loop. And in an ideal world, that will happen, that those will be on the market for the spring real estate season in 2013, so we're hoping to get that done and paved, first coat paved and the sidewalks in by the end of the paving season in 2012, which traditionally is somewhere around Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Is your banker here tonight?
No.
And who's your banker?
Greenfield Savings.
And have they represented that they're comfortable with signing a three-party agreement on this?
They've agreed in principle, but we didn't get the, we actually didn't get the estimate from, from BPW till today at four, I think around four o'clock, and I don't think, I did a cursory, I was at meetings all day, I didn't get a chance to look at it on anything other than my iPhone, so I was scrolling around quickly looking at the, looking at the spreadsheet. It doesn't seem unreasonable to me. There's a couple of questions I might ask Jason about, just because the cost of as-built drawings, I, I may not, it may be done for less than the town engineer was estimating, and there's one, I think the total was 815, which works out to, at 35 lots, it works out to like 23, 300, is that right? 20, something like that, someone does the math, it's about $22,000 a lot. And the other question I had, there was, there was a general lump sum devoted to an unspecified excavation process that I'm not sure, I'm not exactly, he might just be using that as a contingency, which is a reasonable thing to do, and didn't specify exactly what the excavation process is. The other parts of the spreadsheet were pretty clear. He had paving, both base coat and finish coat in some areas. He had sidewalk, base coat and finish coat. He had berm, and he had borrow. In order to borrow, it just means trucking in fill to do the grading on those portions of the road, which are not yet graded in preparation for paving. But that one, so, you know, there's a couple of numbers I might just talk to Jason about in the coming days and work out, see if, what he was thinking, and then compare that to the estimates that we'll be getting, that are in the process of being prepared. But in general, I think that the number seems pretty reasonable to me. It's in the ballpark. And once, I guess the easiest thing to do would be to present you with a three-party agreement draft so you could review it and understand what it is and check with town council to make sure that it's an acceptable method of ensuring completion of the project. But you can imagine that rather than us having to take $800,000 and put it into an escrow account where it sits and does nothing except collect interest, a three-party agreement just, we pay the bank a fee each year as, as the process goes forward until, until the project's complete or until the three-party agreement is exercised by the, by the town because for one reason or another, the town feels like they want to finish the project.
I guess from our point of view, just the lawyer in me, if I was trying to negotiate something like this, is saying to me that the only leverage we have over you right now is the release of these five lots. Not that that's really how I'm thinking about this, but that's really the issue today because we're not, since we don't have a three-party agreement in front of us and you're not proposing to just write a check, you know, really, all that's on the table today is the lot release.
Right. And I think that, I submitted the lot release and then found out after this, the request, and then found out after about the requirement for, for surety to complete the project. So what I would suggest is that I would amend the lot lease request and only request a release of two additional lots rather than these five, and that would bring us to exactly 50%. It would be 35 of 70, and I don't know if the bylaw requires it at 50% or more than 50%.
Ms. Brestrop.
There's no bylaw that governs this. It's just been the practice of the Planning Board, and so you can decide on any number of lots, but 50% is the traditional number that you have, where you've stopped and said, how much is it going to cost to finish this? So you would be within the tradition of the Planning Board to approve two more lots if Mr. Parker were to come back and request those prior to arranging this three-party agreement.
If I'm looking at this correctly, the typo is that Lot 46 isn't, has already been released?
Yes. That should be Lot 56. Should be Lot 56, and in fact, Lot 56 is not cross-hatched on the map, and it should be.
Okay. And which two do you want approved?
65 and 56. So I would withdraw the request to release 2, 52, and 45.
And you can come right back to us as soon as you have that three-party agreement in place, right?
Right.
Anybody on the, also on the planning board have comments? Ms. Kruger?
I had a question. The number that we got from the town engineer, the 800 and something thousand to finish, I'm assuming, but I want to be sure, includes the completion of the Loop Road, so you can't really develop any of those lots without completing, at least without completing Loop Road, so you wouldn't really be looking for, it sounds like that number would go down significantly. Once you put the loop in and you...
I think I can answer the question. In other projects in other municipalities that we've used a three-party agreement, when a portion of the project that the original three-party agreement addresses is then complete, the three-party agreement is amended so that it only refers to those portions of the project which remain incomplete. Does that make sense?
Yes. But just so, even if the five lots, even the five lots that we're originally looking at are all within the area where the road is actually already completed...
That's correct. Not, not, not wholly completed. There's no, there's no finish coat of paving. There's no finish coat of paving anywhere. There are those parts that are paved. There's sidewalk, base coat, and berm.
I actually don't have a problem doing the, the five lots. I mean, the 50% is a rough number. It's clear that you won't be able to build on the rest of these until you finish the loop anyway. I don't, just for myself, I don't, I think that applicant's proposal to, for a third party, three-party agreement, I mean, if it doesn't pass muster, then you can always go back to the escrow, but it seems unlikely. I think I've, I've heard of these things as well, and it seems to me that it would protect the town's interest in completing this project. I also would like to, you know, I'd like to see this completed, so I'm not inclined to hold back releasing these lots either.
We share your interest in completing the project.
I thought you might. Any comments from the board or Ms. Brestrop?
I think it would be helpful if you did wait until you received a revised certificate of performance and a revised map before you went ahead and approved these, just so that we can keep track of everything in an orderly fashion, because this is very confusing as it is. So that would be my advice to you, that you'd wait until the next Planning Board meeting to do this, and in the meantime, Mr. Parker will give us the paperwork, and you have told him that you would be, at least, Mr. Weber has told him that he would be willing to release the five lots, and if you can, you know, have consensus on that, then Mr. Weber, Parker could go ahead and produce the paperwork. But to do this tonight with, you know, material that is not correct, I think would confuse things in my, my office.
Can you, just to be clear, that you're asking that we not release any lots tonight? Is that correct?
I am asking that, yes.
Can I?
Ms. Kruger?
I'm, I'm just going to ask Mr. Parker, maybe you're going to tell us, if you have sales pending and we're going into construction season, that could delay release of a lot and a potential project going forward in a way that could, could be harmful, so I wanted to ask you if that's...
I was going to request a little forbearance and ask if, if it's approved contingent upon would be providing you with a corrected application or a request, corrected letter and map.
Ms. Brestrop.
What has to be done is when you approve it, you sign the document. All of you who voted have to sign it, and you would be signing a document that's not correct unless you wanted to somehow, you know, mark it up.
Actually, the signature page is correct. It's the other pages that aren't.
It is, in fact, correct.
But the map and the other page are not.
Okay. So if the signature page is correct, then I think I have...
Recordable document. The certificate of performance is, doesn't have... Recordable document, the certificate of performance is, doesn't have the same typo. It does not have the typo.
No, it doesn't.
Has the correct lot numbers in there.
Yes, it does. Um, Mr. Crowner?
Uh, you mentioned leverage, and so I, I, I agree with that. I, I would prefer to approve two lots now and wait, wait to see the agreement.
That seems like a compromise that was even suggested by the applicant, so, um, if we were to do that, we would be approving Lots 56 and 65 tonight, and asking that we come back with the completed third, three-party agreement, approved by town council and the bank, um, and then we would release the rest of them. Am I correct?
So, so just to be clear, you're, you're suggesting that, that, uh, release two regardless of receiving the three-party agreement, and then the remainder would be released upon review and adoption of the three, three-party agreement?
That's, yeah, that's, that's what I'm proposing. Any comments, questions?
I just wonder, um, if you could get a sense of the board, how many people are comfortable with a five lot? How many would like to go with a more conservative two lot? Um, it's like, it's sort of like the shutter issue where we.
A term of opinion.
Generally, we don't do straw polls, but I think if I were to say, you know, I mean, traditionally, we have to address these through motions, but, um, I'm fairly risk tolerant. Um, anybody, if, if there's, uh, if there was a motion to, if there was a motion to release all five lots tonight, um, how many heads would I see nodding in agreement? I think there's, uh, one, two, three, about half.
I, I guess I feel a little uncomfortable about the whole package without seeing the, the security agreement, the, uh, three-party agreement.
I think we're looking at two.
Okay.
Um, and the, um, remainder upon the agreement being signed, so.
So, my question then is, is about process. You don't, in that case, you don't have something that can be signed tonight? So, then I will be required to?
Well, no, we can cross out.
The reference is all five?
We'll just cross out the ones we're not approving. That's fine.
And still record it with the crossed out?
Yeah. If you're satisfied with that, it would work in any context I can think of.
Who's going to be the one to cross out?
What's that?
Who's going to be the one to cross out?
Cross.
Mr. Weber? And then would you, once you take your vote, all of you will sign it?
I'm crossing out everything except for Lots 56 and 65.
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Crowner?
I move to release Lots 56 and 65.
Any further discussion?
Uh, just a question.
Yep.
Is it true that the certificate of performance is the only relevant document here, and so the typos in the cover letter and, uh, changes that would be required on the map, which is just explanatory material? Are those irrelevant, or do we need?
Um, I think that we need to have the correct ones submitted, um, but we have, we have the correct, the lots are numbered correctly on the map, it's just they're cross-hatched incorrectly. And the, um, the letter is just a letter.
Yep.
So, I don't see a problem with that.
I'm happy to have you not give me the recordable document until I give you the corrected map. We'll both let go at the same time.
I don't, I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think it's a, I mean, I don't have a problem with it.
It'll take me a day.
It's really up to staff on this one, if she's willing to accept the map after the fact.
I am.
Okay.
It'll take me a day or two to get the map, because the, the person who does it is on the West Coast, there just happens to be somebody who moved out there. The, the letter I can have revised and submitted tomorrow.
All right. Um, we have a motion.
I'll second.
Who, who moved? I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Crowner moved.
Mr. Crowner, yes, that's right. And Mr. Rosnoy, second.
Any further discussion? Uh, all in favor of, uh, approving the release of Lots 56 and 65? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, I'm going to pass this down to Mr. Rosnoy to sign first, and we'll pass it back up, signing in order, so we don't get mixed up. Uh, moving on with our agenda, it's getting very late. Um, I thank everyone for their time. We have to sign some attorney general forms, and we have to deal with a scheduling issue.
I'm going to ask what, if they have.
Oh, yes. What, can you come forward and say why you're here?
I'm Gary, Gary Lanfer.
You gotta use the mic, sorry.
I'm Gary Lanfer, I'm representing Van Caner. We have a one, one lot A and R on Market Hill Road.
Oh.
That we're seeking endorsement of.
Sure.
Um, it's, um, it's a re-subdivision of a, of a plan that I previously did for Van back in, um, 1994, and also in 2004, we did another revision. Um, as, as you can see, what he was hoping to do was have a minimum-sized lot, which would encompass the garage.
We can't see, you have to show us. Oh, you don't have the plans? You can continue with your explanation, though.
Okay. It, what he was seeking to do here is just have a minimum-sized lot cut out around his, uh, his dad's old house, House Number 460, uh, which would encompass the garage, which was 15 feet high, so he kept a 15-foot offset, and a chicken coop, which is 13 feet high, but I kept 15 feet for, for conformity, and then, um, across the back. For total frontage of 279.93 and a lot area of 1.093 acres.
Ms. Brestrop.
I'm going to refer to this as being on Market Hill Road.
Yes.
To mention that?
And.
Passing around a, a locus map that shows where the lots are, and then this is the A and R. So, what are we being asked to do with this?
The remainder of the, of the land has a frontage of 310 feet and 7.97 acres.
Let's see, exist. Let me see, it's, yep, thanks. Um, any special concerns we ought to know about?
I think so. As, as, uh, as we catch to.
Um, questions from the board? I know you're still showing it around.
You're welcome.
I just asked the purpose of this again, the purpose.
Yeah, could you tell us why you're doing it?
Just the purpose?
Sure. Um, my, my dad, I'm Van Caner, um, resident, next door. My parents gave us, um, some land to build upon in 19, in the mid-'90s, and, um, since then, my parents have passed away, and when my dad died a couple of years ago, my siblings and I got together, I have three siblings, um, actually had three, and my sister actually passed away as well, which is, uh, sad, but, so, we, the siblings agree, agreed they didn't want this land developed, so we were, we as neighbors were concerned that the house of my dad's would be sold with enough land to have a flag lot in the back, and we didn't want that, and my siblings agreed, so they were, they approved of this, um, idea that we would actually disinherit, you know, a lot of the sale of the house, and actually pay my siblings, um, for this land. So, it's sort of within the family, we decided to preserve this land, um, to stay as is, because that's how we want it. So, um, we also recently just had an offer on the house, and the closing is, um, June 27th, so we were hoping to get this done in time, because the people buying it have seen a sketch, but not an official, um, map, uh, in the deed.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. Um, any objections to this A and R? Okay, we'll sign it.
Can you, can I, uh, give you a request?
Yes.
If the people who signed this document in red, we sign it in black, otherwise, either people have a problem with the timeline.
Okay.
We have a black one.
That's okay. Help me here, um, just a second. Blue ink, Chris, is that correct?
Do you have the appropriate?
Chris, is this the right pen? The blue one?
The black one.
The black one?
Either one.
Either one?
Whichever one works.
Oh.
Sue has assured me that both of them are.
Blue, black.
Not red.
Sorry, red.
Uh, Transportation Task Force will be meeting Friday to review a proposal which has come in, and to determine how to proceed.
What's that? Is that a public meeting?
I'm sorry?
Is that a public meeting, or, or is that executive?
It's a public meeting, yeah. Uh, the, uh, Friday, 9:00 AM, uh, first floor meeting room.
Uh, from the zoning subcommittee, I'd just like to remind everyone watching at home that two weeks from now, on Wednesday, June 20th, is our semi-annual zoning forum, when we invite members of the public to come in and talk to us about their zoning priorities. Um, and I'll remind members of the board that we will have a discussion scheduled on the planning board agenda for that evening, uh, to follow up on the discussion from our last meeting on the board's priorities going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Apew. Ms. Brestrop?
I, I'm sorry to contradict Mr. Rosnoy, but I believe Guilford told us that the, um, meeting of the Transportation Plan Task Force is not public, um, during the, um, process of selecting a consultant.
Ah, thank you.
All right, I'm going to leave this to the professionals. Unless there's anything else, oh, we have to, we have to decide when we're having our next meeting, we have a request that it be, uh, we have a problem, which Ms. Brestrop will explain.
Yes, we've had a number of, um.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks for waiting. Thank you.
We've had a number of difficulties in the office, people being out because of family issues, um, and so, uh, we did not, um, submit a legal ad in time for it to be published, for a public hearing to occur on June 20th. And this is one of the Amherst College projects. I haven't discussed this with Amherst College, it's 79 South Pleasant Street, so, um.
Tom will not be happy.
This is one of Tom Davies' projects, and also Christine Royal, the people who were here earlier tonight for 67 Seligman, or 67 North Hampton Road, Seligman Dorm. Um, so in any event, I contacted Mr. Weber earlier today to find out if he was, uh, amenable to opening up the possibility of having a meeting on June 27th instead of June 20th. Um, because if that would be amenable to you, we could, uh, file the legal ad this coming Friday, so.
Can we get a quorum here on the 27th? I'm available.
I am not.
Raise your hand if you're available, please.
I, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure.
All right, we have one, two, three, raise your hands, one, two, three, four, five, definite, six definite, we're good. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. So, the meeting for the 20th is canceled.
So, the alternative, may I just follow up on that? Um, the alternative for that if there's some reason why Amherst College can't make it that night, would be, um, either July 11th or July 18th.
The 11th is our regular week, isn't it?
The 18th is the regular week.
Oh, oh, right.
Would be the 4th, if we were.
Well, I'm out of town the 11th.
What about July 4th? Seriously?
I'm unavailable the 11th.
So, otherwise, it would be the 18th?
Uh-huh. Yeah, I think 18th, yeah.
I'll present it to them that way.
Someone wants to, else wants to chair on the 11th?
We have a vice chair.
Unless we have a strong reason to do otherwise, my preference is to not have us meet on nights that aren't part of our regular schedule. We can't do it in this room, it screws up our TV coverage, it screws up the public's expectations.
Yeah, let's go with the 18th.
So, we have no meeting on the 4th?
That's right.
Okay.
So, I will.
Is there, did I miss one?
You require the 4th prints yourselves?
Oh, you can't take them yet, you can't take them yet, because my secretary in our office has to process them, and then someone, she will call one of you when, Betty, don't take them, my.
Don't take them.
You're wrong with yourself tonight. You can take that, but you're taking these.
Um, while she's doing that, we had to re-sign that decision in black, where's that, where are we with that?
Right here.
We did that, yeah.
Did it.
It's all done?
It's done.
Okay.
So, um, may I just clarify that, um, I'm going to present to Amherst College the option of having a meeting on the 27th of June, and if that doesn't work out for them, then the meeting will be on the 18th of July, right?
Right. Okay. All right, so, we're, our next meeting's the 27th of June. Do we have anything else, Ms. Brestrop?
Are we scheduling August now or not?
I think.
Let's go with June and July?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go with that for now, we'll work, we'll figure it out at our next meeting. It's too late, trying to, our scheduling right now.
Do we have word?
Our next meeting's the 27th.
That's right.
Term expirations in July?
Yeah, I expire.
Oh, really? Are you going to re-up?
Yeah. So, do we need to resubmit a CAF, or?
I don't believe so. I've passed your names along, I asked you early in the fall, or in the spring, um, and whoever I asked said that they were willing to serve again, and I've passed the names along to the people upstairs, so I'm hoping that they will take action on that.
All right. Anything else? Regained. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.